Stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. This evening I have quite a few items to get through, but we will start with the winners of the Human Rights Essay Contest for 2022. The Winona Human Rights Commission has named the winners of their annual essay contest for area students in grades nine through twelve. The contestants wrote an essay based on one of four topics designated by the commission. The three winners are all juniors at Carter High School and their teacher is Mary Hansel Parland. I am pleased to present these awards to... First place is going to Madison Gorka. Come on up Madison. I will, yep. Second place would be Mary Moore and third place Hannah Castleman. And you are?
Mary.
Is Hannah here? Okay, well hold on to this for... Thanks again, we appreciate your input.
Take a picture.
Oh, we're gonna take a picture.
Stand in front of the podium.
Okay, yep. Okay, here we go, looks right here, three, two, one, awesome. Okay, I also have a couple proclamations today. I have a proclamation regarding the Older Americans Month. City of Winona proclamation, whereas Winona includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community, and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported, and whereas Winona Park Recreation recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans' need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible, and whereas Park Recreation can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now therefore I, Mayor Scott Sherman, hereby proclaim May 2022 as Older Americans Month in the city of Winona, Minnesota. I urge every resident to recognize the contributions of our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they age in their communities. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my name, or set my hand, and cause the seal of the city of Winona to be affixed the second day of May 2022. I also have a proclamation regarding the Winona County Law Enforcement Memorial Day. City of Winona proclamation, whereas the 11th of May 2022 is designated as the Winona County Law Enforcement Memorial Day and is set aside as a day of, to honor all fallen law enforcement officers, and whereas the well-being of all citizens of Winona County and the United States is preserved and enhanced as a direct result of the vigilance and dedication of law enforcement personnel, and whereas more than 700,000 men and women at great risk to their personal safety presently serve their fellow citizens as guardians of peace, and whereas more than 600 peace officers across this nation were killed in the line of duty during 2021, and whereas all Winona-area law enforcement agencies use this day to honor our fallen fellow officers who have made the supreme sacrifice for the citizens of Winona County and the city of Winona, and whereas this day also serves as a reminder of the dangers faced currently serving law enforcement officers in their day-to-day activities, and whereas our officers do not serve in a vacuum but are assisted in many ways by the citizens of Winona and Winona County. Now therefore I, Mayor Scott Sherman, hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, as Winona County Law Enforcement Memorial Day in the city of Winona, and call upon all residents to join area law enforcement agencies in honoring our fallen officers. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Winona to be affixed the second day of May 2022. I also have a sad note. On behalf of the city council, I wish to extend condolences to the family of Barry Nelson, who passed away on April 3rd. Barry Nelson served multiple terms on Winona City Council from April 1965 to December of 1975. During Barry's tenure, the council made major construction project decisions including obtaining state and federal funding for the levee and dike system, upgrading the city sewer and sanitation system, and the construction of the central garage. Also, during his time served under Mayor Norm Indall, the council voted to change the city charter to the current council and manager format that we have today. Because the informational session ran long, we are going to host county recorder Bob Bambinek, who's gonna give us an update regarding, let me look real quick, first quarter property sales within the county. Hi Bob. Okay.
Good evening everyone, thank you Mayor, and greetings to all the council members and all the guests here this evening. The first quarter of this year was a carryover of all of 2021. There was unprecedented demand for homes, land, and commercial properties. We were fortunate, there were 146 homes that sold in the county, and that was up a little bit from 138 just a year before. Sixty-three were in the city of Winona, there were ten in Goodview, eighteen in St. Charles. The price range that had the most sales was something that for the first time happened in '21, and it started, it carried over into the first quarter of this year. It was $150,000 to $200,000. But we had the most homes in that range for the first quarter, there were 41, a year ago there were 36. Eighty-seven percent of our homes were selling above the county market value, and I'm going to say that it isn't that people are trying to have the highest price that they're paying, it is something that is being forced on them. And I'm gonna tell you just a little bit about a couple of examples here in just a minute, I wanna say that the average price of the home at the beginning of the year I had mentioned to you was 220, we didn't update that for these first couple of months, we just carried those numbers. The home interest rates are up a little bit, about in the 5% range, when I was here previously it was a little over 2. We had the most commercial activity that we've had during the first quarter in '22, so that's really something to take note of, and it just enforces the demand for all properties. Some well-known locations in Winona, D's Auto Center on Gilmore sold for 790,000, Gordy Standard on Huff, well-known location, sold for a million. The former Tectograph Company, which is in the west part of town, near the Watkins Distribution Center, Matika Recycling, that sold for a million dollars. And one other one of interest, the Sinclair Gas and Convenience Station on the west side of Winona sold for a million 500,000. We had 14 land sales, most of them were mixed land, and all my numbers tonight, I'm talking about countywide, and you can look at each one of the spreadsheets, pull out those that are in the city of Winona, but it also gives you a nice look at what's happening all around you, for example Homer and some of the area in Wilson Township and going out towards Rollingstone. So I'm gonna say that 280 acres of tillable land near Houston brought a record price in Winona County, but on the county line, it sold for a million 599,000. And I wanna let you know this because it's just another example of the interest in our land. This was primarily woodland, it had some good tillable land right in the middle, but it was advertised in the upper Midwest. Chicago had a lot of advertising. When the property was shown, for six weeks, there were six parties a day that were taken through the property, six in the morning and six in the afternoon. Those are parties, those are not people. Some of those parties were of two dozen and more. So just unprecedented interest. We had a shortage of homes during the first quarter like we did all of last year and part of the year before that. Also, there was more demand for commercial properties that were available, and the same for rural land. It is extremely important to have a 24-hour-a-day Realtor working for you. If we have a property that becomes available at 10 o'clock this evening, or let's just say 6 o'clock this evening, and the first offers are going to be accepted at 10 tomorrow morning, having someone that starts the day at noon or is just working on the weekend isn't sufficient. I have high regard for all the Realtors, but this is a time where everyone needs to be ready to go whenever a home comes up. This evening there's over 50 people in the greater Winona area that don't have a home, they're looking for one, and you know what, some of them have been looking for over two years. This is just a little bit outside of our county, but about a week and a half ago, a father and a daughter were bidding at La Crescent. They've been trying to get a home for the daughter for two years, and they've been so hopeful, and again, they didn't get it. And afterwards they were bowed in tears after this much time, and they want to live there because the daughter is a professional at La Crosse, and that's the area that she would like to be in, and they've tried. But it's that way in all the area around Winona, going to places like Rushford, Peterson, Stewartville, and all the way around. Tonight, there are a few homes available at Lanesboro, there are two at Preston, and there are a few at Caledonia. Those are about an hour out from Winona, La Crosse, or Rochester, so we need more housing. In the packet that I provided for you, you can see by price ranges where the home sales are, and then you can also get more detail on all of them. The homes that are selling taking place in Winona, they're quoted 32, that'll be your first two numbers in any of the listings, so you can pull those, in addition you'll have the address. I asked for a couple minutes tonight to talk to you about the homestead exclusion, and I think we've passed around an example of a tax statement, and this one is just outside the city of Winona, it's in Homer Township, but all tax statements for your homes are going to have the same format. And under the 2022, if we look at the value of this particular home in '21 was 219,000 and a little bit more. Because of sales, it jumped to 247,000 for this tax statement that just came out a couple weeks ago in '22. That value increase is the result of bid-offs and bids for homes that are taking place, especially in this price range. And I mentioned before, 220,000 was the average, so we're looking right now at average. The second line is what's really important, people are being forced to pay more, it's not they're wanting to do that, and they're not getting any big thrill out of seeing prices go up. But as another professional this evening in Winona is wondering what he's going to do, his family sold their home in another community, they came here, they were able to lease a home for six months, it's unlikely they can continue the lease. Tonight, five months is up, he has also bid on four homes and not gotten a home for his family at this point. He's working with a bank, he's working with a couple of other professionals, there's a lot of effort going into it, but a home for them just does not come along. And again, that could be the story for about 50 people this evening. All right, this exclusion is interesting, the number that you see there for your exclusion amount, that is an amount that you're not paying your real estate taxes on. And so the bottom line, the third line, is telling you what value it is that you are paying on. And when we're at the average, about 220,000 and a little bit more than that, the exclusion really starts to wind down. It will reach a point where it goes away, and you can see the difference here between those two figures. So let me just tell you about that quick, and then you can get back to all the other business that you have tonight. But the exclusion at present is 40% of the value of a home up to 76,000. So you're paying taxes on slightly less than half of the value. It phases out at 413,800, and it really starts to dwindle, and that phase out starts pretty heavily in this 200,000 range that I'm showing you. Tonight, in St. Paul, Senate recommendations in the Omnibus Committee would raise the exclusion to 40% through 95,000. That would help homes that two years ago sold for 70,000, tonight selling for 90,000, it would offer some, it would offer some assistance to folks in that range. But there's a bigger piece to this, people that are in that average amount are also paying more. And so the proposed legislation raises the cap right now by, it's, oh I think 413,000, about that, it'll raise it to 517,000. So those that are paying more, hopefully they can hold the line somewhat on their value and on their taxes. It'd be a reduction of 103,000 before it totally phases out. All right, in the House, just quick, there's a $50 million proposal for first-generation homebuyers, and there's also something that we're watching very closely, assistance on a pilot-down payment program. The last written overview that we saw that was $10,000 per purchaser. And if that would hold and become law, it sure would be very, very helpful for us in our area. All right, there's also 20 million for an affordable payment for permanent rental housing. So I wanted to tell you about the exclusion, there's a lot being talked about, about the high prices, how are people going to afford it? This is the, this is the big piece that I see, but we also have your homestead market refund, and then there also are a number of other programs, especially for senior citizens. So thank you all for tonight, and I hope that the update is interesting. There are a lot of people that are affected, thank you.
Thank you Bob, I think we have at least one question here. No, you're good? Any other questions from council for Bob? No? All righty, thank you again, appreciate it. I'll move on to city manager comments.
Mayor and council, Rita Holmes is here from the Friendship Center, and I think when the mayor read the proclamation, if we could have Marie take him forward and receive the proclamation, and if you could just take a quick picture, that'd be great. Mayor and council, again, thanks Bob for the delay and for the report, and again, thanks for the patience on the delay.
I did mention your top two seals, you know Steve's drawing, but we've got pictures of each turn. It is very, very high-quality housing, but my interest, vessels wrong, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council, a couple unfortunately somber notes. I'd like to take this time, city staff would like to extend our condolences to the family of James Tatina. Jim worked for six and a half years as a library director for the city of Winona, from February 18th, 2023 to September 18th, 2029. Again, Jim recently passed away. We'd like to also extend our condolences to the family of Lori Kapustik. Lori started as an experienced works individual at the Friendship Center, and then we ended up hiring Lori part-time, and she assisted with a variety of administrative tasks at the Friendship Center from July 2018 until recently July 2021. And again, our condolences to the family of Lori Kapustik, she passed away earlier this month. No other comments.
Thank you Chad, I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Mohler.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the public hearing for the body-worn camera policy. And the chief is here for a brief presentation.
For each public hearing, staff will make a short presentation, they will ask if anyone from the public wishes to speak to the matter. You must clearly state your name and address, and you will be given up to three minutes to make your testimony. I will call three times for public comments. Once the hearing is closed, the public may not participate in any discussion by city council. Thank you Chief Williams.
Mayor and council, very briefly, this is part of a required public input time period by Minnesota State statute. The Winona Police Department, along with the Winona City Attorney, has drafted a policy for the use of the body-worn camera system that must be adopted in full prior to the actual implementation or utilization of the body-worn cameras out on the street. We actually looked at several different policies throughout the state of Minnesota. The main driving policy that we looked at was generated by the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, which insures the city of Winona. And then we also looked at Duluth, Homestead County, Rochester Police Department, the Winona County Sheriff's Office, and Dakota County Sheriff's Office as well. As part of our grant process, we had to have a policy submitted to the Bureau of Justice Technical Assistance Program, which had a scorecard. They looked at our policy, they gave us a passing score on our draft policy, returned it to us, and lifted any restrictions on the grant money that we will be getting. This period of time tonight is just to take, it's basically a listening session for the public to provide any input that they have, if they had the opportunity, look at the draft proposal that was posted on the internet for the last 10 days to two weeks, I believe it was. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or...
We'll wait till the discussion portion of it. Thank you Chief Williams.
Sure.
Okay, I will now open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding the body-worn camera policy? Please state your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yes sir.
Okay, it's a little wobbly, it's not coming out my three minutes, is it, adjusting this?
Well, not yet, no.
Okay.
I'll start it.
My name is Joseph Mulkey, I live at 415 Willsey Street in the second ward. I'm here tonight to ask the city council to reject this policy, a body camera policy, and reroute the funding, because not all the funding for these cameras is gonna be covered by this grant. It's not cheap to maintain or service this volume of data, and the city council has not been clear with the public what the ongoing costs and maintenance will be for the use of these body cameras. I'm asking that the city council instead redirect this money to the building of a playground on the property that the city owns behind the former Madison Elementary School Building, to build a playground there, that's much needed. There is currently not a city playground from Main Street to the Pelzer Overpass, other than a sad playground sandwiched between a chain-link fence and the brick wall, the West End Recreation Center. The city has also not been clear what the goal of police body cameras are. Are they to protect police officers from complaints from citizens? If that is so, police officers already enjoy broad and sweeping legal protection from all but the most serious complaints and offenses, and they have no need of any further protection. Is the goal to provide accountability to the public for police actions? If that's the case, what, who is asking for this accountability? Has anybody asked the city? Has the community asked the city for this accountability? And as we, as surveys have shown, at best it's a wash if it provides any accountability for police actions. And a point, an example would be Minneapolis over the last couple of years. Meanwhile, to restate, the city is in dire need of playgrounds and spaces and investment for our children and families. There was a playground at the West Lake that was torn down, there's a playground on Prairie Island that was torn down. The property at Madison Elementary has yet to be developed or utilized, there's, I live in that neighborhood, and children like to hang out there, but right now, there's one basketball hoop with a torn net. There's a decrepit swing set that a community member hung a basket swing on. I understand that some neighbors, I'm not sure who they were, in the Madison area, said at the point of city purchase that that, they were going to fundraise. That hasn't happened. In conclusion, I just want to reiterate, I'm not asking for just any money to be put toward this playground, I'm asking for the money that was, is the city somehow found upfront and ongoing costs to be placed towards the playground on Madison Elementary. This, this is, the city has found this money in a year where they already had to make budget cuts, reduce staff at the library, and the city has decided that it's a priority to have the latest technological gadget. But meanwhile, there are real needs for playgrounds and places for our children. Thank you.
Very good.
Appreciate the comment period.
Thank you Joseph. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Aaron Lomeyer, I live at 578 West 9th, and I'm here because my good neighbor reached out about this issue, and I have lived in Winona three years now. I came in also on the west side, and I've got two kids, before that I was in Alaska, Tallahassee, Florida, Sopchopy, grew up in Quincy, Illinois, Hannibal, and like, in all these places, there was a neighborhood playground. And then I moved here, and it's like, I'm surprised, there's no place for my kids to play. And then, of course, COVID hit, and then talk about some isolation and my kids needing to get outside, living on the west side, you know, we didn't, without that public space and new to town, we didn't have a way to get to know neighbors either, until the road construction on Sioux Street, and then there were these big dirt piles, and guess what? The neighborhood came out, and it was so wonderful, and just to speak to the power of these public spaces, because it functioned as the only public space on West End, was a big dirt pit for kids to play in, and as a result, I get to know my neighbors, I get to know people across the street, and honestly, that dirt pit saved us through COVID. And research shows that that, in any community, that's what a playground brings to a community. It brings not just kids out and the benefits of play, which we know well, but it brings families out, and it connects people, and talk about a, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, this may be one of those cases. Thank you.
Does anybody else from the public wish to speak on the body-worn camera policy? And I will ask one more time, does anybody from the public wish to speak regarding the body-worn camera policy? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Yes, is there any discussion? Stephen?
Never thought I'd see the day where the street department would trump park wreck and park activity, but I think we saw it tonight. Okay, I do have a question, getting back to our body-worn cameras, chief, this is probably a question for you. How will body-worn, I really, I got two questions, one's a larger one, one's a smaller one, how will body-worn cameras improve community policing?
So it's actually many different folds. One, as Mr. Mulkey alluded to, there's accountability, so there's accountability on behalf of the police department, on behalf of the officers, to make sure that the officers are handling the cases to the best of their abilities. It also improves training for officers. From the standpoint, if a mistake was made, we can go back and look at that. If an officer handled a call in a very good fashion, we can also utilize that as well. It also can be used as an educational tool, or at least as the possibility for us to be able to show that the police department is doing a very good job, when they are doing a very good job, and that... a very good job, and that we can also correct anything that is, maybe needs to be addressed. Of course, you always look and hope that they never, ever happen, but when you have major incidents, that the video is available, along with the audio, to help enhance what maybe happened, or recall, or bring it back into focus, and truly show what the officer was seeing at the time, or what the public was seeing at the time. So it's many different folds in terms of what the body worn camera can be. We currently do have in car camera systems, they are stationary. Where the car is, that's where the camera is. As we all know, the officer leaves the car to handle calls and that type of thing. And if you get out of the range of the vehicle, all you get is audio, and the only video you'll get is wherever the camera happens to be pointed, based on where the vehicle is parked.
All right. Second question, if I may. And this, this may be for, for Mr. Hood, but, so I was, I was interested in how we assembled these, these rules and what our policy is. The Minnesota League Insurance Trust was, was referenced. So did, are we using their recommended policy? Or, or did we, did we go freestyle and write some of this ourselves? Or, I'm trying to manage our litigation, I'm interested in what our litigation risk is. Are we, how much did we import from somebody else who's recommending this? How much did we freestyle ourselves? What's that look like?
So, Mayor and Council, we actually did use the League of Minnesota City policy as the template to start with. We had to have a starting point. So we used the League of Minnesota Cities' template. In conjunction with the Bureau of Justice Technical Assistance, they provided us with the Dakota County Sheriff's Office policy as well. We then reached out to the other agencies that I mentioned, the Duluth Police Department, Olmsted County Sheriff's Office, Rochester Police Department. And what the Bureau of Justice requested of us was to basically make the policy our own, if you will, to try and mold it into what we felt would be the best use of the cameras within the city of Winona, and not necessarily the city of Minneapolis, or the city of Duluth, but to take parts of all of that and create it to what would work for a department of 38 officers in a population of approximately 30,000 people. So that's how we arrived at it. We did, as I mentioned, had Mike Flaherty, who's the city attorney for the city of Winona, review it for the aspect of any possible pitfalls as it relates to the legal aspect of it. And the county attorney's office gave guidance to the Winona County Sheriff's Office on terms of what they felt would be the possible pitfalls, what was good, what to look out for. The other thing that we had, we can't fail to mention is its evidence gathering as well. It gives statements back from victims, it gives statements back from witnesses as they say it. It shows the composure of the individuals when you're speaking to them, which is, you know, very important when you have domestic abuse situations, because for an officer to try and articulate what the person saw, or what they believe that the person looked like, is very, very powerful when it comes to an actual court case or prosecution. It can also help exonerate people too, from the standpoint of that wasn't there, even though the person stated it was, you can look at the video and see that. So to go back to your, to your original question, the policy was melded from a group of other ones. And that's what the purpose of this meeting is, is for the public comment to review the draft and see if there's any thing that they would like to have changed.
So we took a base in the Minnesota League Insurance Trust. Somebody from the state of Minnesota escorted it for us, our attorneys reviewed it, so we feel we're on the right track with this, not setting ourselves up for failure or legal problems with this.
Correct.
Okay.
And with policy, policy can always be adjusted and changed. It's fluid. Thank you.
Eileen?
I just, I have a general, I know we don't have a action item for this, we're not voting on this tonight, but I'm just curious, I understand the liability piece of us, of the desire to add this to our equipment. I'm just, I'm, and this might not be something you can answer right now, Chief, but is, does this affect? How does this affect in other communities? How has this affected actual numbers of safety or arrests? Or, I'm just really curious what the material effect on community safety is of an equipment addition like this?
So statistically, or data analysis, I don't particularly have of, say, you know, this department, and this department, and this department have body worn cameras, and they've seen a reduction in complaints against officers, or a complaint, a reduction in the number of lawsuits against the city, or better relationships created. I don't have that. I do know that body worn cameras, obviously, as we all know, are basically sweeping the nation. And in this legislative session, they did pass a bill to provide more money for law enforcement. I truly think that at some stage of the game, all law enforcement agencies are going to be required by the state of Minnesota to have their officers equipped with body worn cameras.
Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief, with your decades of experience, and thank you for your role, let's say the last 10 years, would body cameras on Winona police officers in the last 10 years have assisted as an additional tool for their job?
The short answer is yes. It would assist with prosecution, and would also assist with training, and it would also assist with helping the public see what the police do on a daily basis on the calls that they're asked to respond to.
I know the police have adapted other roles of technology to assist them, and that's kind of how I view it, that's what the basis of my question was, so thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Any other questions, comments? I have a couple of questions again, and I know we're not deciding on anything yet, but I'm assuming, and I believe this is the correct term, the triggers for the body cams will be determined at a later date?
We pretty much have an idea of what we're going to set as the triggers. We are going to utilize almost every trigger that our system, that our vendor offers us. The only one that I don't believe that we will be implementing is the opening of the car door.
Right.
Because you can imagine how many times.
They go on a trip to eat a burger.
Yeah. It activates the camera.
Sure.
Which, there's enough other triggers that would pick up on that standpoint. So we'll be utilizing basically every one of them that they have, with the exception of the opening of the car door.
Okay. And then, this might be a question, more of a question for Chad, but the timeline, this was in the budget, correct? We didn't just come up with the money?
I mean, Council's correct.
Okay. What was the timeline for that? How long, how far back have we been looking at this?
I'd have to go back to Chief on that one, I don't, I don't recall how long. It was in the CIP.
Mayor and Council, we've actually been looking at this for probably about five years.
Okay.
We, and we got to that point where our in car cameras are done. They, we just actually had two body mics that have to be replaced. So they are out of warranty, we've purchased two brand new cameras, we had to make a move to go with the replacement of our in car cameras. And as I mentioned before, we thought that the best time to be looking at the body cameras is in conjunction with the replacement of our in car cameras. And so therefore, we looked at the in car camera, we brought on what we want to have is the same platform, because we don't want to have our in car cameras on one system, and our body worn cameras on another system, just for ease and the sake of connectivity and the ability for the systems to work together. We did plan this for a five year window, and it was put in the budget. And the grant was actually extra money that we were able to get in to offset the cost. So we, we are into a contract with body worn for five years.
Okay. And then, lastly, I'd just like to address the two gentlemen that came up. You've got for sure two council members here, myself and Eileen, that have been proponents of West End Recreation facilities, and how we need to fund those. We do see that black hole over on the, on the west side. You both know me, and you both know that I have a two and a four year old, and we've played on that playground, that squished between the fence and the west end rec. And we identify a need for that. One of the things that I will bring up right now, and I apologize for going slightly off topic, but recently, I have been discussing the potential for volunteer based cleaning up of our park facilities. And that originally was brought up by a neighbor of mine that asked why her pants got dirty when she slid down the slide. And I noticed it as well, and I noticed the things in the dirt and the rocks and the whatever that really should be raked out of there. So I'll just say this tonight, that I would be more than happy to help start something like that within our community, where we can get people who are concerned or want to clean up our parks, where we can take the opportunity to garner some public participation, and take some investment in our facilities, and help bring to light what we don't have over on the west end. So I appreciate your comments. Chief Williams, you may not, I apologize, that's out of order, but I'd be more than happy to talk to you later on. So I appreciate it, Joseph. Chief Williams, I appreciate it. Pam, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I know we've discussed this before, but could you remind me, what are the ongoing costs of, of maybe maintaining the data or editing it as, as needed for protocol?
Mayor and Council, our agreement for the actual contract itself is over $330,000 over five years. So it'll be $60,000 a year. That is for both the in car system, as well as the body worn camera system, as well as the cloud storage and the stations for us to be able to work at and redact. It's kind of a hands off system, if you will, from the standpoint that everything is, is done by the computer. If we do have to do redaction, that'll be done, again, by our support staff, our administrative assistants. And a lot of the work will be done on shift by the officers themselves, as well as by the shift supervisors. So I think within that $60,000, which is going to be hardware and software costs and support, that our costs will be basically taken care of by what we have budgeted for the next five years.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Williams.
Do you want to read?
Yes. For the remainder of this meeting, the public is not allowed to speak unless you have a request before the council, and I have given you permission to speak.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is a Goodview Gallup's street closure request.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.2 is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for the advocacy center for an event to be held on Saturday, October 1st.
Move approval of that license.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just that I'll be abstaining from this.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.3 is a request for a premises permit for lawful gambling for the VFW at 208 East 3rd Street.
Move approval of that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion, George?
Yeah, Monica, what are they doing here? Are they changing vendors?
Mayor and Council, the VFW will be doing their own gambling. I think in the past, they had a different charitable office or terrible organization conducting, I don't recall which one.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.4 is the application for an off sale 3-2 malt liquor license for Rudra Mancato, doing business as Sinclair Mancato Avenue.
Make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.5 is a request to hold a parade by Lake Winona Manor on June 14th.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.6 is a request for an off site premise permit for the Redman Club.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 3.7 is HBC 25th Anniversary Event License Agreement for Wednesday, May 25th.
Make a motion to execute the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And item 3.8 is the Bluff Country Co-op 50th Anniversary Event for Sunday, August 28th, and we do have two reps here from Bluff Country.
Make a motion to direct staff to execute the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, we'll take a second from Pam. Would you like to just speak quickly about the anniversary event? Do you mind doing that for us? Come on up.
People at home want to hear you. Used to be a teacher, so I feel like I have that voice. So it is our 50th anniversary, we felt like the levee would be a great location, considering that it's only about a block or half a block from our store. So anybody can just pop over and see the expansion and how the store looks now, especially if they were one of the original members from 1972, who may be in town. So we're hoping to have some vendors that can come down and sort of speak about their products. We'd like to have some musicians come and play, and maybe some fun games for our owners, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions at all? George?
Yes, I'm going to stump you. Where was your first location?
It was in the old Coopie It's building, where I think it's like, it's a new latch building now, I don't know.
Okay, okay.
You're right.
Was she right, George?
You win.
Aaron?
Yes, thank you. How many owners does the Bluff County Co-op have right now?
I believe, when I was in there earlier today, we have about 2,300, maybe a little bit more. So it's the first time we've ever hosted an event like this, so we're not really sure, but we're estimating probably only like 200 to 400 people will probably come out for it, but.
That's impressive, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it. No other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is the amendment for the Human Rights Commission membership. This was brought to council on March 21st. There was a direction to draft the ordinance. I did do some research on the proxy or designee. I did not find any other cities that are doing it. There, Winona County does have it for some of their committees. I did find an example, the state of Minnesota, by Minnesota statute, they have the Minnesota Council on Transportation Access. It's a newer agency, and they do have designees set up in their committee.
I'd make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. We do have Jacob Grippen, the HRC chair here, if anybody has any questions for him?
Mayor, council members, and staff, I just want to thank the city attorney for the draft that he created. I think we both came to the same conclusion about labeling the designees or the alternate members as alternative members, rather than proxies. There's a certain connotation connected to proxy, and so I think it must have been both of us coming to the same conclusion, because I sent an email to Monica back on April 9th, not too long after our April meeting, and I think, I don't think she ever forwarded that to the city attorney, so I think we just both came to the same conclusion. And I just want to thank you again for the discussion we had back in March, and if, does anyone have any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you, Jacob, appreciate it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 4.2 is to accept the grant for a local road. Item 4.2 is to accept the grant for a local road bridge replacement for the Westlake Boulevard Bridge.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution. Second.
Motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion, questions? Michelle?
Is this project going to take place this summer?
You must not go there. It's already done.
It is?
Yeah.
No, I drive there all the time, but I remember the road.
It's not blacktop yet.
Okay.
It's currently gravel, but it was replaced in November.
I thought that the gravel was because there was some type of washout from all the rain, but makes more sense.
Yeah.
Okay, so it won't interrupt anything.
Way ahead of schedule.
I love that, though. Thanks, Brian.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
And item 4.3 is to award the contract for the 2022 Batumina Smellin Overlay Project to Dunn Blacktop with a bid of three hundred forty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and award the contract to Dunn Blacktop. Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? George?
Uh, for Ryan, or I do not see any fourth Ward Streets in here.
Okay, listen, you have a ton of fourth Ward Streets going on. Mankato Avenue, okay?
Just a question, just a question.
Relax.
Ryan, you do have 23 and 24 layout kind of there already, right?
Uh, 23 somewhat. It kind of changed last year because we did manage to get, I believe, at least one street from 23 done last year.
Okay.
But it is partially put together, yes.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Steve, you had a question?
Uh, Ryan, am I right? This is what, uh, so we got eight blocks here. Is what, three hundred fifty-four thousand dollars worth of asphalt gets us? Is that right?
Yep, um, asphalt, and we'll be doing a little bit of, um, curb work and a little bit of gravel base as well.
So here's where I'm at. This is what I want us to understand, the very small amount of, of, of street, mill and overlay, street replacement that, that we're accomplishing this year. This is, this is, um, this is really small compared to what our needs are. Uh, um, you know, I, I, I take calls frequently, uh, from constituents, and many times it's, it's with streets and, 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 and the condition of our streets. And I, I don't see how we can continue. It's not, no, no, nothing against you, of course, Ryan, but it's just, it's just all of us. I feel like the way that we're funding streets is, is, is broken. And we've got to somehow figure out, uh, uh, how we can get more money into streets to be able to, uh, uh, meet the needs of the public. There it is.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments? Michelle?
Just building off of that, I think we need to go back to that original idea of the million dollars a year that we had originally agreed to when we got this extra money from LGA. Um, unfortunately, over the last seven years, that has been slowly torn away, and less and less money's been put into streets. So I'll agree with you. Um, we have to address that, and I think it just has to be a commitment from the council that we're going to prioritize streets and alleyways. I know Pam has talked about that a lot. That we either have to make a jump forward and decide how we're going to fund them and do it, or, you know, those calls will never end, and so, I, I mean, maybe through the budgeting process, we can talk about that. I know the next few years are going to be rough, but I think this should certainly be a priority of the city is our, our streets and our alleyways, and so I, I will agree with you there. At least we're getting something done, um, on the west end. George?
George? Uh, just a comment that, uh, I agree, you know, more money should go in there, but like over the past 10 years, the roads that we have really done, and we've done a lot of miles of road already over the last 10 years, so, uh, there could be a lot more calls coming, and yes, we do get them, but a lot of it has been done and a lot more to do, so. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Any other comments or questions, discussion? Thank you, Ryan. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under New Business, item 5.1 is the Proposed Property Transfer from the City to the Port Authority at 60 Main.
Make a motion to approve the resolution and introduce the ordinance approving the transfer to the Port Authority and accept the three attachments.
I will second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 5.2 is a Joint Powers Agreement Renewal for the Emergency Management Director.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution. Second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 5.3 is the Annexation Request from Palmeroy's for 22189 Pinecrest Road.
Make a motion to approve the annexation request and accept the two attachments and forward this on to the township for approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And item 5.4 is a Resolution in Sports of Local Government Aid.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Uh, motion from Michelle, second from Steve. Any discussion? George?
Yeah, just as we fight every year for local government aid to try to maintain what we have, sometimes add more if it's possible, but just one thing that we need to make the state know in that through this small community, we send probably twenty-eight million dollars a year in sales tax money to them, and they don't really do nothing as our businesses collect it, cities, counties collect it, but that's a lot of money in asking for twelve million dollars back, thirteen million dollars back. I don't think it's a request that's out of line.
Thank you, George. Uh, I will say I received an email from League of Minnesota's Cities regarding this, and I forwarded it to Chad immediately, and Chad emailed me back, "Ha." I was just gonna put this on the agenda, so we were on that as soon as we saw it, and, uh, we do support the, the increase in local government aid, and this will be going up to LNC as well, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 7.1 is Council Concerns.
We'll start with Councilmember Worszkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, thank you for honoring Pam and myself for this month.
She rejects that.
Or myself, anyway.
Get a whole month.
Thank you very much. It's an honor, uh, well-deserved for us. I see the engineer and the public works director are here. I forgot it last meeting.
Oh.
Hamilton Street Railroad Crossing and 827 East Eighth Street. Thank you, gentlemen. And, uh, also, uh, Lucy, when homes are caught fire and there's a lot of damage to them, is there anything that we have, apparently we must not, as to why these homes sit, bringing down these neighborhoods with burned-out structures? Is there something we can do to say you got two months, three months, five months? I know the one I'm talking about, you know, is in foreclosure, but I mean, that's an eyesore for the neighborhood in the city.
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, uh, we do, we do have the ability when there is a house that had a fire, we can order it secured. So in other words, if there's openings in the roof, et cetera, we can order that done, going beyond that or giving a time period under our current ordinances. We don't have that particular time period. Another thing that's available to us that the city attorney would know a little bit more about is, uh, substandard buildings. So if it continues on, there's a process through state statute, uh, that we can look at. I believe, if I'm guessing at the house that you're speaking of, there was a fire. It is in foreclosure, and that's what's taking so much time, but it was, uh, sold.
Okay, that's what I heard, so thank you. And also, I'd just like to share with the condolences of Jim Stastina and also Councilmember Barry Nelson, who was at large. And, uh, my father had the honor to serve with him for many, many years, so, thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander?
Um, I just want to address the park situation on the west end. I think, you know, Madison was never a city park. It was a school park, so I wonder if Jefferson is not accessible to the community. I know we have a sad park down on Pelzer. It's kind of looks like it was a neighborhood playground set. And I know we had talked about opening up the playground at, at the, at the pool by switching the fencing so that the people that wanted to go there just to play at a park could. I think we maybe need to explore that as part of this next cycle, because although it's not building a brand-new facility for someone, it gives them access to one that isn't up against a brick wall and has sunshine and, you know, is in the open. Um, I know that the one at Dakota, that came out right when I got on council. It's because it flooded. Um, I had had a conversation with Pam last week about using infill on that end of ti- I mean, we have all the sand at the ports that sits places and, or even from the Army Corps, and maybe we need to explore filling some of that land in and putting in a, a park on that end of the lake. I know we had maybe had this expectation that the major park that we just collabed with on the lines would fill a need, but I think what we're hearing is that on the west end of town, they're not going to drive out to Valley Oaks and up into the hills to look for a park. There needs to be one that's accessible in the main part of, of the community. And if that's down at the lake, then we should look at an option. But I think maybe in the short term, we should at least explore opening up that park, um, to residents that maybe don't want to go swimming, but they would like to have a nice park to play at that's accessible. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Michelle. Councilmember Ayden?
Well, I'm going to chime in. Uh, last, at, after the last meeting, uh, I had a talk with several people, including Patrick Menton, about ideas for that, for that Madison School lot, and they included some play equipment that was, is kind of natural play equipment. It would be boulders or a big log or, you know, things that are not necessarily, uh, high-tech or expensive, but we do need to clean it up and take care of it, and I would be really surprised if we can't find money for that. Thanks. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Councilmember Muller?
Um, I, my comments were also related to the parks. I think, um, you know, one of the issues that, uh, one of the folks that commented, raised is an issue of investment that it's all well and good to assemble a corps of volunteers, but we are saying that we're not going to invest any of your money in the things that you want to, but you should show up and just donate your time, and I don't think that that's fair. I, I do support volunteer efforts. I think that that's a great opportunity for community members to come together. I do think we should work together to clean our, clean and take care of our community spaces, but I do think that we as a council need to do a better job of investing in the facilities and the resources that really and truly improve quality of life. I, I know there are important investments we need to make for fire and police and streets, um, but we have consistently over the last few years cut the parks budget. We have cut the library budget, and those are two of the most important resources for the kids in this community and for families who want to be here. Um, you know, I think when families move to a community, they look at what's available for their families to enjoy their lives. They're not necessarily looking at, do they have the biggest police department? And I, I understand why we have needs like that, but I, I really think that we need to stop saying to the community members, well, you should show up, you should volunteer if we're not willing to make those same investments, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Eileen. Councilmember Young?
I have a question for staff. I've had two people approach me, uh, asking me about, uh, like pollinator for the month of May and not mowing their grass. Uh, Pam's nodding as well. Uh, also saw it on Facebook. Uh, um, is, is, is this a thing? I've, I've, uh, somebody, somebody gentleman said he, he was wondering if he could maybe not mow his grass for, for the month of May. This is, this, this is a thing to, to, uh, generate, uh, 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 space, food and reproduction for pollinators. Um, uh, is, is that something we're aware of or doing? Okay, yeah.
Mayor and Council, we do have some ordinances on, uh, the height of grass and how high it can be. We have worked with homeowners before, for example, if they have wildflowers in their boulevard and it's the appropriate time of year, uh, for them. It can be a visibility issue and also a neighbor issue, but we've worked with neighbors and had them fold their, uh, foliage down, so to speak, so it wouldn't block someone's view. So we're happy to look in to see what we can do, but we do have an ordinance on the, on the length of grass, but we usually don't get calls until it's quite bad.
Th- this is only for the month of May that this is being promoted, so.
Pam, maybe you remember this. I could swear that we voted last year on this B-friendly community that would allow them to have wait a couple extra inches of grass before they mow in May. I could swear we voted on that. Do you have a memory of that, Pam? I, I think we, we became a B-friendly community, and that was part of that initiative was to let people in May wait for a couple more inches of grass before they mow. Am I remembering wrong?
I remember the discussion. Um, I talked to John Howard, and he said that he's bringing this forward to the Environmental Committee at the next meeting, the idea of a no-mow May. So, but really, can't we just let people not mow?
Lucy, what's the ordinance, six inches? Is that right? Yeah.
We're good, we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not going to get enough warmth to.
Yeah, and I take issue with that, Pam. You called for warm weather last two weeks ago, and it didn't come.
Yeah, go ahead. You had a comment?
Uh, Mayor and Council, we can look at the pollinator resolution that we passed. Um, I think it may be a couple years ago. We can certainly bring that back at the next, at the next meeting.
Thanks, Jim. Councilmember Young, anything else? Okay, very good. Councilmember Rupinsky?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, National Corrections Officers Week is May 1st through May 7th. Just want to say thank you to the correction officers here in the Winona area. Thank you. And secondly, just want to remind the public that there is a lot of work being done on Broadway right now. Please, um, keep a careful eye and a watchful eye and just drive a little safer if you can on Broadway right now as work is being done. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, there are four items. Approval of the minutes from both April 4th and April 18th. A claim against the city by Mary Jo Klinkner, a claim by Sarah Curtin, and a claim by the city for damage to a squad car. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Uh, motion from Michelle. I'll take the second from Pam. I heard that one first. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The time being 7:37 and there being no further business to come before this council this evening, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Michelle, second from George. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.